To the flag of the United States of America and its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be seated, please. Roll call.
Member Anderson.
Here.
Vice President Gibson.
Here.
Member Breckow.
Here.
Member Swallow.
Here.
Uh, President Suto.
Here.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for August?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to pay the town bills, water, sewer?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the fund and appropriation reports for August?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I'm going to, it's not on the agenda, but Attorney Zarmak is here and I'm going to let him speak now.
It is on there, it's interlocal.
Well, it doesn't say, I didn't know who interlocal was.
Number nine.
I didn't know who that was. Okay, you can, you can go.
What I handed out is called a joint there is a
You can say.
... and the agreement between the town, they kind of also the county commissioners to transfer money to the town 400,000 dollars. They moved the money, the purpose of the money is to remodel the design to model the, they'll have a purchase, purchase about a month ago, not today. So my idea to do is take a look at this immediately, I'll meet with the county commissioners tomorrow to get their, I've talked to the county attorney already on this, and this is what we agreed to, but never know. So we're gonna, I'm gonna talk this down tomorrow and maybe by, I'm sure by tomorrow or Monday I'll have a final agreement. So there may be some additions, some amendments that they want to make to this, which would be incorporated into this. So this might be the final agreement, or maybe not, maybe could change. So what we would do is, I would say the final county commissioners, I'll call a special meeting at this time to approve it. Now, the law regarding these type of interlocal agreements allows you to individually sign this and approve it in private, at home, if you want to. But you would have, in the end, you would sign it, it becomes a workable document. But at some point in time, either in their future or immediately or in our future, you have the need to approve it. So you can have it and you can work by it as far as without it being yet approved by the county. Don't make questions.
So can we do that this evening, Simon, or you want to wait?
I'll wait because it could be.
Could be efficient.
Do you want to go ahead and make a meeting now, since everybody is here, the council, so that it coincides with your schedule? I mean, we're pretty flexible, but.
Thank you, Eleanor. What's good?
The week of the 21st, I'm calling, so. You think it'll be maybe approved tomorrow?
Informally, yes.
Okay. So, but then it's got to go to the county council?
That's true. We have a meeting, county council, because I represent the county council as well. First reading on our budget for next year is on the 16th of September. So, that's a two day, next two days. So what's a good date?
So, do you want to do it like in the morning?
It doesn't really matter to me, this isn't there, six o'clock.
Oh, we have to advertise it, so.
I have, I have an appointment at six o'clock, Tuesday the 16th.
On what, what date were you saying?
Well, the county council's got to look at this, and it's pretty much 100%, it's ever reading on the 16th.
Oh, 16th of September?
That's a week.
That's fine with me, how about you?
I can't make a
I have an appointment at six o'clock.
What about the 19th?
It's
If you, if you want, I mean, you can do this at the next.
Council meeting?
Yeah.
But when they can transfer it, I can't wait much longer.
Okay. Would they like to have a side copy?
Mm-hmm. So that's what I'm saying, if we have a special meeting on the 19th at 10 o'clock.
That's good.
The 19th, September 19?
19th at 10 o'clock.
That's fine with me. How about you guys?
It's a Friday.
Not a Friday. I
Thursday, 18th?
Friday.
It's Friday, just.
We have to advertise it, so.
Mm-hmm.
I want to wait, make sure it gets approved, the commissioner's meeting is 17th, right?
Right.
County councils is 16th, 19th.
So the county council is 100% tied, that's no problem. And I think the commissioners are
They are, but it's just informal. So.
So you want to do Thursday?
Huh?
We should have a discussion, or just open it up for discussion.
Thursday or Friday, what's best?
We can at the meeting before we sign it.
Thursday or Friday, I'll say Thursday, 18th at 10:00 a.m.
You got it.
Everybody else good?
Yep.
Dave?
I don't know.
Brenda?
I don't know, I have to look on my calendar, because I may have chemo that day.
You know, actually, what we're gonna do on the 18th or 19th is approve the document. And you'd have seven members.
And, and at that time, at that meeting, Ray, can, if there's anybody that has any discussions about that, that's when we'll talk about it.
It's a public meeting.
Okay.
What I would suggest, if we're gonna have discussions, we could wait before
Before that.
Before that thing. What I want to tell you is, to adopt this book, you just need a majority.
Majority, okay. So if somebody can't make it.
So if somebody can't make it, they can do it later.
Yes.
Okay.
But at a public meeting, you gotta have three votes.
Yeah, yeah.
But he said you could sign it, Sharon, so you have.
Well, Jim can't come Friday, everybody else can, so he can sign it later.
I thought we were gonna do Thursday.
Well, I thought it was Friday.
I didn't say I didn't come, I couldn't come, I just suggested Thursday.
Oh, well then, let's.
We're talking about two different things here. We're talking about signing what you can do anytime.
Yeah.
Have a public meeting, you can sign it. And then the public meeting, which would be the actual vote to approve.
To approve it, okay.
So I mean, by the 18th, which would be a vote to approve, everybody can sign it before that.
Okay.
Follow me.
Yeah, okay.
So, so we're good for the 18th, Thursday, the 18th at 10:00?
We advertise it.
Okay.
And where's the meeting gonna be?
At the school?
As far as I know, here.
Here? Okay.
Oh, it's a public meeting, yeah.
Thursday, the 18th is coming up.
Yeah. We have to make sure the hall is, we have to make sure.
We have to make sure this hall is available, or the station community hall is available.
Yes.
Yeah.
I am also going to have to show Tammy or somebody else how to set this up, so this will be recorded.
Oh, you can't go with Ken?
Sue, I have a day job, I, I set this when the law was passed.
Sorry, Joe, I can't do it.
Yeah, I, I
How about, hey, Tony?
But special view.
If he shows.
If I'm the one to do it, it has to be in the afternoon.
Tony, would, I'm sorry, Joe, to interrupt you, Tony, could you do it?
Can you show me how?
Would you?
Or me, I don't care.
Yeah.
All right, do you have any questions for Ray?
No, everybody understands, it's a simple, the county's getting money from ARPA, the American, whatever it was.
We're legalizing that.
And we have to take that 400,000 and spend it on remodeling and reconstructing the American Legion for it. That's basically the conditions, it's not.
That is, that is.
You can't use it for anything else.
No.
No.
Except by
Except for his
Which is part of
You have a budget, Ed.
No.
Me too.
So you got it. So what I would hope is, if you're satisfied with the 248, if you can't make it new, resign the document, okay, and then you
Do they have a copy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we have, all, all of us have a copy.
Yeah, I have an original.
Yeah, and that's the one we have to sign.
That's what you have to sign, but I'm not gonna give that to you until after tomorrow.
You might make changes.
Yeah, but if there'll be changes, I will email you.
Is it me out there again?
No.
Okay.
Maybe I'm trying to
They'd like to see you tomorrow.
Yes, yes, yes. All right.
All right.
Okay.
No. We'll talk to you tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thursday at 10:00.
They all signed them? Oh, Director Tammy, please.
Number seven.
2026 budget hearing, Cindera and Dalton.
I don't know what this is, what is this? They were supposed to sign those.
Yeah.
There's three things here to sign, or there should have been three things, I don't know what happened.
Here's mine, I've got.
No, there are all three here. Thank you.
What does that?
Yes.
Oh, I've got mine here.
I just have to make sure that someone, yeah, yeah, it is, okay, yeah, it's, okay, adoption.
And then pass the talk to the guy.
Yeah, I will.
So we've got, if I look over the documents quickly, forget situated for the before I start, everyone, I'm Andrew Iken with Cindera Dalton, who I'm here with, I'm Trista Hudson, another advisor in the office. Today, we're here to walk through the 2026 budget that we put together for the town, go over, touch on what we're estimating for the revenues, as well as give the council idea of the property tax revenue that we've been cut to receive to this point of year. Council members, if you want to start looking at the expenditures, that's that bigger schedule looked at, that is the budget planner, which it may look familiar to some of you, we had a meeting maybe two or three weeks ago, going over some of the numbers we had put in, and then just got comments back from you, as well as some of the other department heads, just going over some of the changes that we need to make. And just to highlight some of those items that we made adjustments to since then, as we discussed, we decreased the compensation requirement just a little bit, I believe it was originally at 30,000, we had agreed to decrease that number just to 25,000, because once again, we are expecting to lose property tax revenue, Senate bill one, so what myself, Sue, and Tammy were looking at, is finding areas in the budget that we would be able to make those cuts, and what would be feasible for the town.
Let me just jump in here a second, you're not, by the cut, you're not suggesting that they're paying specifically this cut, it's simply
Right.
The total that's budgeted
Right.
In the past has not been used to the amount that's been there.
Right.
And so that's an easy place to absorb some of that extra revenue that's somewhere different because of the property tax implications from downstate. So
Right.
The firemen are not receiving less money.
Okay.
They want that to be
Yeah.
There should be a lot of pennies.
Definitely would not recommend that.
It's just simply the amount that is a lot.
I was wondering if I heard that right.
Thank you for the clarification, yes, no, we're not, yeah, we're simply finding areas in the budget that has been left over money, so that way we're able to say more anticipating that we're gonna have some revenue losses here in the coming years. If you want to flip to page six, that is the, the park and the recreation fund, we last discussed having, making some adjustments there, and I believe what we did is we decreased our contractual services amount, because it was budgeted, I think we had about 10,000, I think we agreed 6,000 was what we budgeted there, and then in turn, we took some of that extra money and we increased our budget for gas and electric costs, because we anticipated those to go up as well. So I think we got that squared away. Let's see. I think the only other item we really had any significant changes to was the cumulative, sorry, cumulative capital development fund, we budgeted about 15,000 this year, just seeing the trends from past years, we weren't expending as much as we were budgeting, so we believed that we were over budgeting, so we cut that budget down as well, once again, kind of for the same reason that Trista explained, just with anticipating some revenue loss thing, where, where could we, you know.
Which cumulative capital, that you still have the parks and the recreation?
No, this is, this is a different
Oh, not, yeah, sorry.
ACD.
CCD fund, okay. We had just historically noticed we had been over budgeting there, so we cut back in that fund just to still appropriately budget for what we need to spend, but not over budget. So that way, the town can save money anticipating some of that revenue loss. If you want to shift to, we can go over our revenues, that's that other staple packet there. So this is just a document that quickly outlines what we're estimating the town will receive. So you'll see some of these, some of these tax lines, so motor vehicle, commercial vehicle, some of these estimates are provided from the state, they provide a template on the website, so we went with the, for these estimates, we decided to stick with what the government was estimating for those, and they have certainly been pretty fairly, fairly accurate estimates, so we believe that those are good numbers, you know, we can expect to receive somewhere around that amount of revenue. And then kind of some of these other lines that you'll see, and maybe licenses and permits, once again, we just took a look at historically, you know, what the town had received revenue wise, just kind of from some of those line items, and we can approximate based off historical revenues, you know, what, what we can expect to receive for this coming budget year. So, yeah, you can flip through this, we kind of, once again, the, the tax, tax revenue, we got those numbers from the state, and then kind of some of those other miscellaneous ones, we took a look at, just looking at the town's revenue reports. And then kind of piggybacking off of that, that last page, that independent, this is what we have put together for the town regarding the property tax revenue. So you'll see at the bottom here, you'll see
One right in the top now.
Okay, yeah, so I guess we can start at the top, so at the top, you'll see on that right column, you'll see our estimated December collections, and so you'll see, we have listed here our certified levy, which is what we get from, which is what we get from the
I have it.
Yeah, budget order for 2025, and then using the abstract levy, which is the levy less the circuit breakers, that gives us a number of what we can expect to receive for the remainder of the year, so you'll see a column for the spring tax distribution, so that's property tax that we've already received, and you'll see we have it listed by the funds, so you'll see the general fund received so far this year, just under 230,000, and then you can read down the list and see what the other two funds have received, and then you'll see our column for the December tax collections are just the, the difference between what our abstract and our collection is. So those far, numbers in the far are what we can expect to receive property tax wise for the rest of the year. Are there any questions on that estimate, or is it?
So this is our actual, we gathered this frame, the 229, 187, that's what we got. Okay. So.
And then that column next to it is what we're estimating.
To be in December, where they pay their taxes.
Right.
As you may have seen in the past, it's very common for the spring, the June distribution to be higher, and the fall, some people pay
The whole same.
Early, some people are catching up on prior year's bills they haven't paid yet, and so the spring is always a little bit higher than the fall, so looking at these numbers, I don't want you to be concerned about
No.
To let it be lower, because that's very difficult.
It used to be that your mortgage companies would pay it in full, I know that's lately, the last few years, when I go in to check, that they're only paying the May installment, and then they're paying November.
They can earn interest if they keep the rest.
Oh, that's true.
They pay mine.
If we move down our, this sheet here, you'll see our levy calculations for 2026, so kind of just explaining kind of how this bottom chart flows, so you'll see we have our 2025 levies listed, and then the Department of Local Government Finance released also our maximum levy quotient at 4%, and you'll see that at the top right, kind of next to max levy calculations, so we factored in that our levy would grow for our general and recreation funds by 4%, and so you'll see, you'll see our 2025 max levy, and now the growth factor is that 4% increase, which for, you'll see the totals for the general and the park and recreation fund. The cumulative capital fund is different, it doesn't grow based off of that, it's set by, it grows by a rate which I believe is set by, by the town, and I believe you're, you're at the maximum rate, which is 5%.
Yes.
So what we've done is just calculated a 5% increase based on that, which is how we got that 28,000 number, so how that's calculated is a little bit different from the park and the general funds, but we do show, show the estimate increase in levy, so we took those values, and then the DODF also provides us with a spreadsheet which allows us to plug in what we believe the max levy will be, and which gets us a, which gets us our estimated circuit breaker amounts, which count for the over 65 circuit breaker, the 1%, 2%, the 3% circuit breaker credits, and so that gives us this total here, and then you'll see on the far right, we end with our estimated net levy, which is our maximum levy subtracting the circuit breaker credits. So for 2026, we're estimating that the net levy be just around $382,000. I will say, looking at this, the cumulative capital development fund, I think for, for our maximum levy does not factor, the cumulative capital development does not factor into our max levy calculation, so however, I'm looking at this now, so we can actually possibly, Trista, maybe you could correct me if I'm wrong here, when we factor in the levy of the cumulative capital fund, it actually, our levy may actually be higher than that 380,000.
No, so the, the max levy is just attributable to general and park.
Okay.
And you see it grows for next year by the 17,000 and the 900.
Okay, right, I just wanted to make sure I was accounting for that probably, so, okay, so that 380,000 number is, is inaccurate.
Just the top two.
Right. Yep.
So in total, you see that the far right bottom, the 2026 estimated net levy, general fund is 364, number 364,000, comparing it to the green box at the top, the current year's levy after circuit breaker is 384. That difference there is because of Senate Enrolled Act one, so as to the general fund, that's the predictive effect that you'll lose an additional 20,000
On the
Which is a portion of your overall circuit breaker. All three funds share the circuit breaker. That's a DLGF number, we hope that it's a little bit more conservative than what you'll actually experience, but your net assessed value grew, what was the percentage they grew?
I believe
Over four, right?
Yeah, I think it was a little over four.
So the fact that you had some AB growth is fantastic, because that helps lower the tax rate a little bit, which means it takes longer for people to get back to the tax cap. So fantastic that your AB grew, hopefully that will lessen the effect of this new Senate bill, but it's still money out of the town pocket.
Yeah.
No matter what, if it is a dollar, it's still money that you cannot use on your services, and it's extremely frustrating. But this is just laying out the example of why when we had come to the workshop, Andrew was really talking about trying to get some cuts out of that general fund, so that you know you can afford your budget, and I think we've got you, from that workshop, your comments and things in a really good spot, with some of the comments that you made earlier, so tighten the belts, again, if, if departments could underspend this year, leave some extra cash, that leaves some room next year and the, the two years after for a little bit of flexibility, because these cuts will continue, they're predicted to be worse next year and then the year after that again. So.
Yeah, they can be worse.
Do we adopt this tonight?
No. We
Right, I guess, are there any questions regarding, regarding the budget or anything we just discussed that maybe we can clarify?
So we discussed, we're gonna lose about 24,000, so we've got an M of 20 now, so for general
Yeah, okay, so, that's better than 24,000.
Right.
And they keep spending more and more.
All right.
Any other questions?
So, we have the adoption meeting dates for the next council meeting in October, and it's on, it's on here, so it'll be Wednesday, October 8th at 6:00 P.M.
The 10th, October what?
October 8th at 6:00 P.M., at the next town council meeting.
I believe we do need to
Advertise that, right?
We've already advertised the adoption.
Well, I know, okay.
I guess regarding this, we need to appreciate that public hearings, open it up for public comment.
For now? Now?
Right.
Okay, I'll share.
What, I'm sorry.
Open it up to Publicary, comment, publicary.
Is, is there any, anyone that has any question in the audience? Is there anyone that has any questions? Anyone that has any questions? Evidently, there is none, so.
That satisfies the statute.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So many papers. Yes.
Could they just speak what they've been in the office doing today?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
I think that you're aware, we've been working also with Tammy and the bank racks back from 23, after the most recent audit, to make sure that all of the entries in the computer system are recorded properly, there is no concern of, you know, missing money, that, that's not, it's not a fraud investigation of any kind, it's simply that the system needs to reflect the activity, and sometimes maybe something was entered as an adjustment instead of an actual deposit, or was entered as an adjustment instead of a, a check number, you know, written out. So money in the bank is fine, again, that's not the issue, but when the state board comes for the next audit, whenever that may be, of course, they don't announce, right, they just come knock on the door, and here we are, we want to make sure and have been tasked by you all, of course, with Sue and Tammy, to get your, your records a little bit better shape.
Up to date.
Up to date.
So I was able, last week or the week before, with Tammy, to go to the public works building, get the records from 23, they were in nice neat boxes, we did uncover them a little bit, but we found them, and the records are in pretty good order, so Andrew and I came out a little bit earlier today, starting to go through the examples we found from the bank statement and the printout from the computer, to then get the hard copy of the records to make sure that we can show the state board, here's the legitimate pieces, you know, to put the puzzle back together. For what we found today for January 23, in the town side, they were in, whatever I want to say, I don't, they were a little bit better shape than I expected, I was worried that we would find some chaos, and it really wasn't all that bad, it took some minutes to piece some things together, but we did find what we're looking for, for these couple examples we had, so that's, I'm really hopeful that's some good news, and I'm hopeful the rest will go as quickly. So that's, I'm really hopeful that's some good news and I'm hopeful the rest will go as quickly. We have the three accounts, town, sewer, and water to do. And there's maybe about three to six per month of things that need to be kind of investigated and tied out. While we're looking through the records, we're going to make photocopies and scans immediately so that when we do go to make any kind of final adjusting entry in the end, it'll be a single number basically. But then when the state board comes, we can hand them the packet. And say, here's everything, very organized. Nobody else has to go back and dig any further. You know, flow right down the list. And so we think that would be most efficient for the town and for all of your staff as well. So we'll give you an update again in a couple of weeks and hope that it can flow well. It was nice also to double check a couple of weeks ago that twenty-two was taken care of in the last audit. So we're only doing twenty-three and twenty-four, which will help with the timing and, and all of this as well, so.
Thank you. I do have a question and it doesn't pertain to that. It pertains to 2023. I know some employees, they're W two's, were messed up. They're still messed up. Now what do we do about it? It is not their responsibility. It is the town's responsibility to take care of that.
I, I've already taken care of that.
So who else is messed up?
So what it appears from the couple of letters, because Tammy has forwarded us a few of the IRS letters that people have gotten. It looks like originally they were given maybe a duplicate W two from one side or the other. So Tammy's gone through and making sure that everyone has the corrected cop. Not the corrected copy because the copies were right. They just had maybe two of one instead of one of each.
I've already sent everything off. I sent it off yesterday.
Yeah, Robert, you were messed up still, weren't you? On your.
I fixed.
Oh, did you? Because when we talked last, it was, so that's why I'm saying, mine's okay. You know, I'm.
Now the letter state yours is good for the IRS.
Yeah, oh, I got even more of a refund back.
And I would like to say, if anybody else gets a letter, which, you know, I spoke with Trista about it and she said more than likely, everybody may get a letter that is paid out of order. Because when they were sent off, there were duplicates.
Jimmy did.
Please bring me the letter as soon as you get it.
Well, then yours was okay.
So I can take care of it. I can fax everything straight to the IRS, which is what I did yesterday for Gabe and Robert.
I know twenty-three was not, Tammy was not clerk treasurer at the time, you know? And mine was okay after Cinder corrected it. I received a letter and it was okay.
Yeah, and again, it's not that the information they were given was wrong. It's just that the copies, you know, town letter, sewer.
It was doubled.
Were doubled or one was missing. So as soon as the IRS gets the correct, you know, A B C, everything will be fine.
Okay.
It may require, the IRS may require an amended tax return, but because you'll have that information that matches what the town submitted then, no troubles. And it may result in a refund because originally the IRS thought you don't get one, but in fact you should have, and so.
Yeah, well, I didn't know what was safe.
And I, I would like to add something. I would like to thank the council for allowing Cinder Dalton to come in and work with me.
Oh, absolutely.
At least bank press.
Absolutely.
After I went to State Board of Accounts about it to get them straightened out. I know it may not seem like it right now, but my goal when I took office in twenty-four was to help the office run more efficiently. So by council allowing Cinder Dalton to help me with these and to get this straight, when I do get audited, because I will be in nervous wreck, when I do get audited, it will help things flow more smoothly, as Trista said.
Yeah.
So I would just like to thank you for allowing them to come in and help me.
Oh, absolutely, Tammy. You can't learn that overnight.
I'm in four years.
Well, they said it takes five to learn the job.
And it may take, if they keep changing stuff, it might take longer. Because they always change stuff. Okay, all right. All right, correspondence, Tammy. Oh, I'm sorry, Joe, I forgot you.
How do we get the guy that's in the bright yellow?
I O T, I don't know what I O T is.
That was the, so that was the thing I dropped off to you. The, well, I wasn't there.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
I gave you a couple of copies last.
I did look at it. I did read it.
So what I'm asking for tonight, and it's actually, I thought there was something that you guys had to sign. It's actually just done online. So I'd like the council's permission to sit down with Tammy because it can be, it can be a council member, it can be the clerk treasurer. It basically has to be an elected official that says this person has authorization to talk to I O T. And that's why I'd like to give you guys permission on the talk, to be able to talk to them and see, like we talked about, you know, they're offering free website posting.
Yeah, and, and like I told you, make sure you find out all the ins and outs to it.
Yep.
Yeah.
And before I do anything with I O Ts, you know, it'll, I'll come before you guys at the next council meeting and have everything for you guys.
So we know what it is.
So you know what it is.
Yeah.
Discuss it and go from there. Because like the web posting part of it, that may not even happen because if that doesn't include this basic email like our current posting, then, you know, we can't do it because we don't have the money to pay for separate email service.
Yeah.
So that might, that part might be a wash anyway, but there are other things. Like the one thing that they're giving the touchscreen to sign up for now is a website called Beauty. And it's basically an online course, like online courses for a whole bunch of different things. I actually use that website myself personally for learning how to do code. That's how I learned to create the apps that I've created. But they've got other stuff on there for like cybersecurity training, you know, other trainings that would be, that would be beneficial to the town and then would also kind of show like the insurance, hey, we're, we're, we're having our employees do these trainings to be more aware of.
Yeah, well, hopefully that's all free.
Right, right.
Because you know, we're getting cut twenty thousand already.
No, and that, and that's why I'm going to, once I can actually sit down and talk to them and, you know, I, being a former state employee, I dealt with I O T as the I T manager for the Port District and Doc. So I know there is always some time printed in the box.
Yeah, exactly. Well, as far as I'm concerned, I don't know about the rest of the council. I have absolutely no problem with giving you permission.
Lloyd, do they need to make a motion on that, Lloyd?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, maybe give you permission.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Joe.
Tammy, I'll meet with you sometime this week. Well, if, I've already looked at the form, it's going to take longer than the legislation.
Sorry, I forgot about you. Oh, they got a fire. Okay, correspondence, Tammy.
Okay. Over the last few weeks, Diane and I have been interviewing several very qualified and exceptional candidates for the position, the part-time position that we were looking for. The reason I asked Diane to sit in on the interviews and ask questions is because she's the one that does the training. This, the person will be working out in the office with the girls, you know? So I thought it would be good to have her sit in on the interviews and we could discuss. So we did pick a candidate. She will be starting on the twenty-second. So I am asking for approval for pay for the new hire.
And is that what we've always lately been saying? I don't know if we can say the amount in, in, in public or not.
It's, it's what I've, we've been starting out as though. It is in the salary ordinance.
Okay. Yeah, I have, you know, I'm all, I mean, do I, well, I didn't probably need to make a motion. Do, do, do I have a motion to approve the hiring?
I will. I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye, aye. Motion carries. I'd like to say one thing on this, Tammy. I don't know, because I know before it was said about hiring two people, I would like to see you hire a deputy clerk to help you. I know you said you only have your computer, we can get you another computer. If this, because it, it's a lot of work.
Okay, well.
So I, I don't know who, because you'd have to train somebody probably, I don't know.
Yeah, then you have to go to school. Yeah, and it's.
Well, what school?
Not in the budget.
States, the court school.
Well, yeah, when they have it. Yeah, like Tammy goes.
Right, just like that. So why don't we wait till we get in the new building when we get the office?
Because she needs this. She really does.
There's no room in there, Sharon.
I know.
Well, maybe once this new person gets in and he'll, he'll free up Tammy with some extra time.
Yeah, I mean, she can't let somebody know nothing on her computer.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, no, no.
We have a problem already.
Yeah.
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 Okay, we'll bring it up after you get into the new building, but I think that's the thing that she needs.
We've, we've had deputy court treasurers, okay, going back to me and before. Nobody's ever got paid for that.
No.
So usually you take somebody from in the office.
But you don't have nobody.
Well, I do have one person that knows how to check on some things when I'm about, not everything, not what I do in Keystone and everything.
Is it the one I'm thinking of?
It's Kathy.
Kathy, yeah.
And, and she is very good about checking positive pay and that's my main thing and doing deposits. She knows how to do deposits.
My main thing is to help you out.
Right, I understand. And I appreciate that.
Okay.
I really do.
Then, then we'll hold off and see how it goes and get in the new building. Okay, so you've got that passed, Tammy.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh seven, parks additional appropriation, second reading.
Yes, and I did correct it. I gave you all new ordinances to reflect that it's Park Operating Fund and Park Other Capital Outlays. This ordinance twenty twenty-five oh seven is an ordinance of the town of New Chicago, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing additional appropriations in the twenty twenty-five budget, Park Other Capital Outlays, Park Operating Fund. Whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget in the Parks Other Capital Outlays of the Parks and Operating Fund. Whereas the town council is aware that the fund currently holds sufficient cash balance to support the requested additional appropriation. Now therefore be it ordained by the town council of the town of New Chicago, Lake County, Indiana, that it is hereby provided and ordered for the expenses of the taxing unit. The following additional sum of money is appropriated out of the fund named subject to laws governing the same. Funds twenty-two, twenty-two oh four and forty-four oh three, Park Other Capital Outlays is the four hundred series. That is twenty-seven thousand, three hundred fourteen dollars. Twenty-two oh four, Park Operating Fund, ten thousand dollars. The total for Park Other Capital Outlays and Operating Fund, thirty-seven thousand, three hundred fourteen dollars. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, duly adopted by the town council of the town of New Chicago, Lake County, Indiana, this tenth day of September, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh seven?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Here you go. No resolutions. Department Police. It's you, Dickerson.
All right, good evening, everyone. Assistant Chief Mayo, while you were doing your reception, they gave him a report in reference to what the police department did over the month of August of twenty twenty-five. So in reference to citation, traffic enforcement for the month of August, New Chicago officers go a total of two hundred eighty-six citations, of which one hundred twenty-seven were local ordinance citations. We also conduct a notice of traffic enforcement detail and continue, we continue our efforts to promote highway safety and the total of seventy-five with the total of ninety at the same time. Townwide cleanup. So apparently we were supposed to have a townwide cleanup this weekend. That has been scheduled to Saturday, September twentieth and Sunday, September twenty-first. I guess there is a scheduling conflict and the dumpsters will have to remain throughout the course of the weekend as the disposal company does not pick up on weekends, so they'll be in place till Monday.
That's ridiculous.
And us as officers will monitor that to make sure that there's no residual dumping or messing with the dumpsters while they sit. So our department vehicles, we have been having some major reliability issues with several of our units. This has been an ongoing challenge for the department. However, progress was made this month as the Howard Discop Motors donated a working vehicle to the New Chicago Police Department. This will provide temporary.
Goes through Dave's design.
Community engagement and fundraising. Chief Mayo has plans to host a vehicle raffle fundraiser to support the annual Christmas party. There will be a hundred raffle tickets that will be sold for a hundred dollars per ticket. The ticket, the winning ticket will be drawn and announced at the Christmas party this, this year. Proceeds will help offset costs for community and family oriented holiday program. This initiative not only supports community engagement, also promotes goodwill and transparency in the department fundraising. Training and reserves. Our new reserve officer awaiting official start date from the Indiana Law and Sports Academy to begin their pre-race training. Once underway, this will strengthen manpower and increase support for full-time staff and patrol, special detail, and community programming. In closing, the New Chicago Police Department remains committed to public safety, physical responsibility, and strengthening trust within our communities despite continued challenges in staffing and vehicle resources. Our officers remain proactive and dedicated to serving the benefits of New Chicago. Respectfully, Chief Earl Mayo.
Dickerson, I have one request and would you pass it on to him? I would like, because I know he has hired officers, I would like to know their names and if they're part-time, full-time, if they're paid. And I also want every month a schedule and I, he could put it in my mailbox. I will make sure the council will get a copy of all that, okay? Okay, thanks. Please commission. You don't have no report?
No.
You didn't have a meeting or? Fire Joe's not here. They had a call. They had a call. Town, town manager.
Still looking for some help with ambulance.
What was that paper you?
That was from.
Where was this com, this company from?
That's the one with Fox. That's the one that we met with prior. And they gave us what they, their, what they would do, so.
But then, then.
They will lease you an ambulance.
Huh?
They're going to lease you an ambulance.
I know, I read that.
Okay, that's what that is.
But then who's ever on that ambulance have to be employed by that company.
That's correct, if you have any E M T.
Yeah, we don't.
Okay, so then.
I mean, we, I have one E M T, but he's not going to be on there.
So right now we have no ambulance service again.
No.
So, okay. So we guys need, we got another company that's going to come talk to us.
And what is the name of that company?
I don't know what the name is.
You don't remember?
I'll let you know when they contact us.
Oh.
This was through, Kedum and Township had an ambulance service. They quit servicing them, what they did to get free ambulance service into the area. So I don't know who it is yet, so I'll let you know.
Yeah, let me know.
You'll be figuring out what you're going to do.
I know, well, what are you, what are you going to do? You don't have the money to do it.
No, once again, the P N R, the Department of Natural Resources has the volunteer fireman program. It's access military equipment, so you can petition them. So we need to have the information that we would need to fill out an application for that, but there is.
Oh, we got two months to do it, so.
For the firemen?
Yes, so they, they can give you an ambulance. So instead of leasing an ambulance from someone, they give you one. They maintain ownership of it.
Yeah, but you've got to have an E M T and.
Correct, but it's only the fireman or firemen are currently going through. Well, it's better than nothing, right? And so, I mean, that would be a place that we can begin as if another officer or someone else, because the training opportunities are also free.
Yeah.
So if somebody needs training in a job, they can go to that foundation and be trained. So there are options for us. And I need cooperation in order to fulfill those. And I need cooperation in order to fulfill those running of.
My only concern is, okay, so if you have a EMT, two EMTs, they're volunteer. If they're busy and they can't come when they're called, what are you gonna do then?
We still have a problem.
Yeah.
But we're beginning, that was, it's a step in the direction, if you don't want to pursue it, say so, you know, I have not.
Well, I mean, I, I would like to have more information on it.
It's free.
Yeah.
Is that the more information needed is free?
Yeah.
Because I think we're.
I don't know, we'd have to get with the firemen and see what can be done there. Because I know Joe has a hard time keeping guys too, so. And this, I don't know if you, I don't know much about that. Other than you say it's free.
His response when I talked to him about it very briefly was, no. So I feel that, you know, perhaps, because he didn't know about it. And he says, oh, well, they won't give us any pay. I think they will. I have called downstate and talked to them and they indicated that there was a strong chance they would give us something. So I don't see any reason why, should we pursue it, but I don't want to do it without the council's approval. This was presented by, you know, downstate when I called in about information about getting, being the help, that sort of thing.
What's the downside?
Well, I mean, okay, you're gonna get an ambulance, but once that, when you furnish that ambulance, how are you gonna furnish that? The town would have to pay to furnish that ambulance.
Not necessarily, it comes ready to go.
But one time, right?
Well, so, okay, so we'd have to buy supplies.
I'm just saying, because I.
We'd have to buy supplies for it, yes, but you're also, you're, are you considering the fact that people would be paying for that rock? So yes, we would be paying the money to refurb, to refurbish it.
But for that's a liability.
You know, Band-Aids and gauze and whatever else in there. But we would then be able to charge the, you know, the people for the rock. So it wouldn't be just a, you know, hey, we got this free ambulance, we got a couple volunteers and we're making the money off of it. You know, the town would, in theory, as long as the bill is paid, be making the money off of it.
That requires insurance building.
Yeah, how would that be?
And they have to cover insurance and everything else too.
It's not easy to, you gotta build these health insurance companies and doctors have teams of people and businesses dedicated, so they code them right, so they can get better, you know, Medicare and Medicaid money.
Yeah, they have to have, they have to have the license plate and enough liability insurance.
Well, he's talking about building, like, say you took, say you, you took riding the ambulance, he's talking about building your health insurance.
My, my, my main concern with this is, what if you don't have a volunteer to come to pick up that ambulance and get something?
Somebody to be on staff twenty-four hours.
Whoa, and you don't have no money.
That's what you would have to do.
And you have no money for that.
And I don't know if we've tried this, can we approach somebody, I just did some quick calculations here. When we paid thirty thousand and I think we had approximately two hundred and fifty calls.
Yeah, we did.
That's a hundred and twenty dollars per call.
That's what I'm saying, but then they bill for two thousand dollars.
No, no, I get that, but what if we came to some ambulance company and said, we'll give you two fifty a call?
We, we, she did, they haven't spoken with.
We did, we met with Enhill and they were seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
But how much per call? What if we said, we'll give you five hundred dollars per call?
They said it's not making them any money.
And that's the problem, even with Superior, we don't have enough calls that it provides them the initiative to come and handle us.
Who's handling Hobert?
Huh?
Who's handling Hobert, it's not just Hobert, there isn't.
Hobert.
Hobert.
It's just Hobert.
Yeah.
Same with like station.
Yeah, same with like station.
I went to Mervan's, Brenda and I, and we, who else was with us?
Morgan.
Morgan, and talked to Markin. There is no money for ambulance service from the federal government. So went there, I called Reagan, I said, I need some kind of help. She's gonna talk to Eddie and, but they had the big Michael Jackson thing last week, and so we're on the back burner until then. I saw Earl Harris at the Taliesin's party on Saturday, I said, I need some help.
Yeah.
Will the county, will the county help us?
No, no. Porter County has that where if a small community does not have the money or the resource for an ambulance, they will cover them. Lake County does not have that at all.
Everybody should have got a letter from Reagan. She wants to do a Zoom call September twenty-sixth or October second or October tenth. I want some of this counsel on this Zoom meeting, so we can tell her that we need help in New Chicago.
Well, we're gonna have to do it at, because I don't know how to do Zoom.
Well, I didn't set up.
You got, you.
It's fairly easy, you just get the app and.
Yeah, it's easy.
You're looking at me?
No, I mean, I can, anybody, I can show you. It's so easy, I can.
I do it daily.
Well, you're a lot younger than me.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's what, what we're dealing with, so nothing at this.
Well, I'm hoping maybe Eddie Bonmelt will help us, because there is a station in Miller. But I thought you were going to talk to Eddie.
I did talk to Eddie, I've talked to him three times.
Have you already?
So I'm waiting for somebody to get back to me.
Okay.
As I said before, I talked to Fetch, Matt Fetch, the township. And he said, what happens in communities that don't have it, the township usually steps in. I don't know if we can do that, well.
Maybe, they might have to be obligated to.
Somebody.
I was wondering, is there a legal obligation?
I don't know.
No, there is no.
Why not? We pay taxes there.
I don't know, we'll ask Brendan Clancy and the rest of them.
We pay taxes towards that.
And that's why they're who are also trustees and they do not.
Who does Snyder's work? I mean, somebody's.
Porter County, County of Health.
Snyder's in Lake County.
Okay, I don't have that.
I'm, I'm just talking about little towns, as small as us, that are.
They might be covered by fire territory. I don't know.
They gotta do something. I just use that as an example of a small town.
What is this, who's this, new balls? Okay, let's go, let's, let's move on. Town manager, did you read all yours yet? Did you do yours?
In between Morgan and Robert, we'll discuss, we'll keep going.
Okay.
Each one.
All right. Park Board.
What are we discussing?
The meeting we went to, so.
Oh.
So Park Board?
No.
No, oh.
I'm, I'm mixed up here.
We went to see Legacy Foundation. Yeah, so, okay, so. Do you want to discuss that? Yeah, Morgan and I went there. Okay, so there are a couple of different options there. The primary one is the Transforming Lake County Grant, the Devine, or that is the end of the month. We can ask for money to help provide tech needs, like, you know, phone systems, computer systems, all the, that technological stuff that people want.
Mops for the doors and the buildings.
It could be used, this would not be for the police department, this would be for the town. Okay, so that, so anything municipal. As long as it has a strong community access aspect to it, we're likely to get money from them. So what John and I are working on now is looking at a list of the needs that we would be required to identify. We don't have to have the exact specific items, but, you know, we wanted by something like this and send up a picture of it on Amazon or wherever we may be purchasing from. So we're gonna be working on that and I'm trying to get that in, in time to help provide some funding for that. So we're looking at perhaps, you know, conference room apparatus, like a whiteboard with a projector, computers that would be there. How many, well, we can hear you all? Yeah. With the microphones?
Yeah.
So this would be a situation, like, you know, it would also be a room where the community could come in. We would maybe, you know, add in broadens or routers or modem, so that people, when there's a building, can use the, have public access to.
The internet.
The internet. So, yeah, so that sort of thing. The other one is a community based kind of a thing, which I think we probably need to spend more time thinking about and talking about, because it's much more involved. But that was a productive meeting and sounded very positive. Came away with the feeling that if we get the grant in on time, which may require some support from you guys, I think a lot of support, we're likely to receive something. We may also approach them for sponsorship for the Dark in the Park event, for some solar lighting or some kind of lighting to enhance the project, which I guess that goes kind of under Park Board, that's covering the legacy.
Is, is, is this grant, like a eighty-twenty match?
No.
No, okay. I see nothing wrong with that, Morgan, at all. I mean, to me, it sounds very good.
See, they give me the list that you guys had made prior, like, what technology, new technology.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we did that a while back.
Yeah, so I do have that list, I'm gonna start compiling that, hopefully, generally.
Well, for our new building, we're going to need different stuff.
We're gonna need specific too.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
We're gonna need technology too.
Right, that's, well, that's what this plan is specific for, the technology for that new building.
Because I don't know if there's gonna be anything from Mervan's office, you know what's going on.
Well, I know.
So, but we're gonna work on getting that together and get that submitted to court level.
Okay, good, good job, thanks. Okay. Plan Commission.
Well, the Park Board first, since I didn't do all that.
Oh, I did Park Board.
You did, but then we had to go back to Town Manager.
We have not Park Board.
Park Board.
All right, so Park Board.
You guys are going back and forth.
Just try to keep our tone.
Yeah.
So we had rubbish in the park and kind of like garage sale this past weekend. And we did have two, two winters down the park, we had five people sign up for the town map and I drive them around, I did see quite a few more.
They should have paid five dollars to get on the map.
Yeah. So, but for the first year, I think that was a good, you know, it's a good start, so. We may pick a different date next year, because I didn't think about it. I thought the Popcorn Fest was this coming weekend, not last weekend. So that, that kind of hurt us too, so. But CDBG, we are still moving forward with that. We actually had a good meeting today with Velocity plumbing, Jason Rider from Lake County, and Greg from Kids Play Stuff, to make sure that everything we're wanting to do would be covered by that great. And that was part of the ordinance that you guys passed today, that was to allow us access to the money that's in the building fund and then also addable money into the general fund, so that we can utilize that whole CDBG grant without having to try and, you know, quickly pass it over.
Yeah.
Repurpose though.
Because we have to spend it and then they reimburse us.
Yeah.
So right now we're looking at, we did find out that certain kinds of mulch, actual playground mulch is accepted when we're doing a DVA project like this. So we're looking at, right now, possibly mulching the large playground area by the north.
Is that that rubber mulch?
Yes. It's similar style to it. But it'll be in that large playground area by North Pavilion. We're looking at several sensory items, the, something makes out, playground equipment makes out.
It requires no explanation, just dig a hole and put things in it.
No.
And then the last thing is, and this is something we actually get asked for a lot, is a water drinking fountain that is gonna go, if you look at our garage building, where the garage door is, there's that little cutout right there.
Yeah, there's an indentation there.
That's where we're gonna set it, so, and the water line is literally right on the outside of that wall. But this water fountain has the ability, it has a spot for filling water bottles themselves. It has the normal non-gating fountain, it has a wheelchair accessible fountain, and then it also has a dog bowl.
So where is, where is the actual water line underground right now?
Well, it's gonna come through the wall of the garage, it's already in the garage.
Oh, it's in the garage?
There's already, there's a little, a little bit comes out of the garage where we have the hook up for the hoses and also the line.
Well, that'll be, that'll be nice.
Yeah, so the biggest part is gonna be, it's great. You know, Velocity is looking at the spec on it, we'll see if it has to be like a four-drink tile, in which case we know where our sewer line is now, I'll get to that in a second.
Oh, do you? Oh.
Yeah, I'll get to that in a second. But they would be able to just put a line over to that, if they can't just, you know, hook it up a different way and run it again through the wall to be.
Inside the garage.
Inside the garage where the sewer line is for the particles. Speaking of the sewer line.
Wow. The mystery solved?
So Velocity came out, I had them come out with another company that had a tracking device. They basically put a camera down the pipe, we went outside, they waved their little wand, we found it, and we found that our pipe had shifted, where the, where it went from a metal pipe to PVC, it shifted. So that was one of the things causing our occasional backups. They put in a clean out to straighten out that pipe, did everything good to go, came back out again to start cammering the rest of the way, because we thought that it was possibly, you know, sewer running out to Lake Park. We have a subduct tank.
Where? It doesn't surprise me.
Over by the, where the pipe holes are, there's a subduct tank.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Wow.
We missed it.
We, so, all these lovely trees we planted, and we were using the logger to move the hole. We missed it by a foot.
Eight-one-one.
Eight-one-one doesn't mean any good.
Yeah, they don't do subduct tanks, oh, they do water and gas.
That was like our own, you know.
And no one, and no one could tell us.
We never knew.
Yeah, no one knew if we were sewer or something, we didn't know where the line ran out from.
Yeah.
So is that subduct hole empty?
Barely empty, believe it or not, because when he ran the camera through it.
Well, you don't have that much there, people going there.
Yeah, but how old is that?
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Being pumped.
Yeah. Yeah.
And she's got records dating back to the nineties, she has a record that it was being pumped.
What you mean to mayor failed, but we don't.
So, but no, they, when he ran the camera through, they got to the end and it was kind of popped out and. So, no, I don't know, we don't know, and we won't know this until we find the cap.
The lid.
The lid. We don't know if it's like the subducts throughout the rest of the town.
Or if it's a concrete one that they put in there.
Right, so we don't know if it.
Like years ago.
Brings into that and then the gray water drains out like the rest of the town does.
Or if it's just on itself. Yes, I bet, I bet it is.
We can learn that too, to explain some interesting graphs. So, yeah, we do, we are on the subject there. So if we do ever replace the snack shack, we'll now know.
You're, you're away from it.
Where we're gonna get you.
Yeah.
At bathrooms in there, so that mystery is finally solved. But still next CDBG, we are gonna try and use, you know, the full amount, which I think was thirty-two thousand and change, for all this, which I imagine a good portion of that will probably be eaten up with the mulch, but they'll get that area remulched, we'll have a drinking fountain that people can use, and we'll have new equipment for the kids to play with, so.
Jason encouraged us to spend as much of it as we can.
Yeah.
He said, as long as the project has ADA compliant components, and like, during the campaign, then we can go ahead and buy, we don't have to use the foreign place, we can just, a rubber.
Okay.
We did get the new roof on the garage and bathroom building, just, I got, I haven't got that. We have a new roof. Um, we have a new roof on the garage and bathroom building. Um, I'm waiting, I'm gonna be getting ahold of them to ask about the gutters, cause I thought when we sent that in, and then we signed it for gutters and roof. So, um, I'm gonna call and ask them about when they're gonna come up to do the gutters, but at least we don't have to worry about roof spring a little leak. And they replaced a lot of pipe.
Well, I'm sure that thing hasn't been touched in how many years?
So we're gonna be, we got paid a little bit extra, but that's, you know, it's something we do going into it. So. Um, they're from the park this long. They did meet with National Honor Society Tuesday. It's kind of a busy week. Um, they're gonna have, they're estimating about thirty students. They got twenty currently and they're looking to deduct another tax. So, and they're very excited to take part in this again. Tell them this is their third year of doing it, so.
What's the date, Joe?
Hope they rain.
It is.
Or snow.
You don't do say that as word.
Why do you say that out here?
Earlier. Yeah. So it'll be the twenty fourth, twenty fourth, twenty fourth.
No.
No.
Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen.
Oh, it's early.
We're going earlier because there's a noticeable shift in the weather.
And because they have that week off from school.
Oh, okay. So that'll be, that'll be good.
Yeah.
And um, they're not banging into so many of the other.
Things going on.
Oh, expense.
Yeah, we're kinda getting a jump on that.
One night we have conflict with Lake Station.
And that's the Lake Station versus Rumor Forest football game.
Oh.
So that might be, it'll probably be slow. We won't have all the students there, cause I'm over on the team and everything, but.
Recruiting volunteers that want us to address our own charities.
Oh, no. Not me. Sorry.
I, you know, I wasn't gonna say that, John, but I'm glad you did. Um, so that pretty much covered, that covers?
We're gonna subdue the day this part.
Yeah, I think we're good on park.
One other comment about parks. We are continuing to have issues with vandalism and obnoxious behavior. Um, somebody decided that they needed to get into the storage unit and sawed off one of the um, catalogs. So it's now got two chains on it. Um, of course, they did, once they opened it up, saw it was a bunch of like, um, kind of ratty looking old Halloween stuff. They didn't change things.
Did you guys have someone come out and report it?
No, we did not, because nothing was taken.
Nothing was taken.
Nothing was vandalized.
Yeah, they they cut the locks off. That's vandalized.
They cut the one lock. They didn't take anything. And our one camera doesn't face that up to.
Dickerson, I know you work the night shift. Do you guys go through the park every so often?
Yeah, they do. I see them down there. They're there.
Well, I didn't know. I didn't.
Sit down.
Huh? Yeah, okay. Yeah, but.
Um, I I just brought it up because we are also moving out, getting one whole camera down there. We now have Wi-Fi down there.
Yeah. So, um, I did talk to AC Global to help us with that. Um, we're gonna move one of our cameras.
Yeah.
Cause we have two cameras that currently face Tyler. We're gonna move one of those from where it will face the uh, contact box, the storage container.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because our current camera system is only an eight camera system.
Yeah.
And we have eight cameras. So I'm not going to say for a whole system upgrade just for one of those.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And I am also working on getting it to where we can see the cameras.
On your phone or some, yeah, yeah. So that would be good because you're not down there all the time.
Yeah. Well, I have to be careful with that, cause the cameras do have the motion, like motion detectors on them. And so like certain cameras, I'm gonna have to disable the motion detector because.
Oh, the animals.
My phone's gonna die five minutes after pulling out the charger.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Yeah, bugs, they're.
Animals and.
Well, I'm more specifically the ones just facing Tyler in Lake Park.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you know, we are having many, we're still having somebody dump animals with like.
Oh, shit.
Capoo in different places now. And then they leave the, you know, bags, they leave the cans for us to clean up, books, you know, or shit we're having. Just rather intimidating behavior by a handful of young kids on bikes, um, riding through at high speed, too close to people and they are walking. I watched them do it to other people that's done it to me. And they are exceedingly foul and intimidating in their behavior.
That's when you need to call nine one one and get an officer.
I called, I wasn't told to call non-emergency, so that's what I did.
Oh, yeah.
Um, but you know, as soon as you pull out your phone, they go, um, but.
That's a shame. Yeah, that's really a shame.
Okay, Joey.
I think there are mixture, some are pedal bikes and some are the.
Both, yeah. Um, I mean, they're speeding through on pedal bikes, um, as well as, and we try to tell them, but we don't have signs that there's immobilized vehicles. Because they have those electric scooters and electric.
Dichcos and all.
Couple of weeks ago, there was dirt bikes, two kids running up and down from the other side of the bridge to that slalomway.
Right. And and they see the grass and the grass all the time.
Yeah, that's what they were doing. I chased them.
But they, it's just crime.
Yeah.
I, so, yeah.
Okay, Joe.
Yeah.
Well, I have reports from students that there is a big deal of kind of rather safer behavior going on at Todd, which is right across from the school. Yeah, right at school. That's how, I was parked over there the other day. I pulled in, cleaned up garbage, packed my car, answered some email and some of the students walked by, looked at me like, what are you doing there? And then took pictures of my license plate number. And I thought, well, you go ahead and call that one in. And I was saying, I was sort of cleaning up the garbage, but other people left. I didn't see any students hanging out there. But then I was parked there, so in a black car, you know, they may have just thought, hmm, better keep walking. So I don't know. But we talked about that before.
Joe, is that it then? Everybody? Okay. Sewer, Robert.
Plan commission.
Plan commission.
Oh, gosh. All right, plan commission. I'm trying to hurry it up.
We didn't ask the doctor tonight. Um, we gave him all the information for, you know, making sure he's in compliance with I D M. As far as, uh, you know, if he needs a real bike permit or anything like that. Uh, we did prove him contingent on him getting the survey, he was getting, you know, getting a, some plan sheets with the elevations. So that Robert and the plan commission can review those to make sure that when you build the house, it's not the, we're water runoff isn't going to affect other projects.
I know for a fact with MS four and that they have up their criteria on how to do things. They're more strict now. It's not like it was before years ago. You just did whatever. Now they have strict regulations.
Yeah, and we gave.
And they come out and they look too.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we gave him all the information on that. The information was routed this for him. Um, we gave him all the information for that and um, you know, until he shows us plan sheets with elevations.
Yeah, absolutely.
This is going.
Where is this located?
Uh, he's got houses, he's got parking lot in Benedict?
Yeah, Howard and Benedict. This is gonna be a Howard.
Is that a single family house or duplex?
Townhouse.
Townhouse?
A two story?
Two story, two story.
Okay.
Oh, I'm thinking something else.
Yeah, so it'll be, it'll be basically duplex. It'll be two story duplex.
Yeah.
Oh, a duplex?
Yeah, well, it's called, it's townhouse, but it's, if nobody, I don't know.
One unit, one unit?
One unit or two?
That's what I'm trying to say. It's a two unit townhouse. So it's basically, it's basically a duplex with a second level. That's for better, for better explain it easier, cause not everybody's seen dual towns like that. So it's like one unit up, one down, or both units are two story. Both units are two story. But it's not a wall. So an icon wall.
Looks kind of like a condo. And they're nice.
Yeah.
There you go.
And showing your love.
And I was a quiet official.
Okay, Joe, thanks. Sewer, Robert.
Okay. Um, today I was with our technician that P M's all of our stuff. And we have to get a, it's called a starter for one of the, for the pump station on Harrison. That wasn't previously provided by our other provider because it wasn't in stocking and order and due through relations in China and shipping and all this other stuff. I went with a different guy that can get it within a week and it's gonna be cheaper. So that's good there. And also for all these, not only the pump stations for sewer, but for our lift stations, the pump stations also surge protectors. Because when the power goes out, it burns those electronics though.
Oh, yeah.
And that costs us thousands of dollars. So these surge protectors are a few hundred. So I spoke with the town manager and she said that would be a good idea to have a put on all of them.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
We would rather spend a few hundred dollars now than say thousands in the future, not only for equipment, but overtime for myself or Gabriel coming out in the middle of the night.
Wouldn't know what to do.
You know, maintaining this. We're also installing bypass valves in there. So if Indiana American has a power outage, which they've been having quite frequently in New Chicago, we can manually put a garbage pump on there. Put a hose on it and force pump it down the line where it can go and go down the line and normally flow like it has. So this is all in the works right now and it should happen within the next two weeks. All this stuff should be installed and ready to go. Correct. And that's all for silver.
Okay, uh, but we, talking about the rate increase, we will probably have to raise the sewer prices.
Timmy got a, I don't know, the bill today, was it up? Was it up?
It was around twenty, it was twenty three fifty five, I believe.
And how much more is that from last time?
Almost a thousand.
Yeah.
So according to Carl Sander, we have to do a rate study. Okay, so it's just gonna cost sewer money, but we gotta have it done, okay? Um, two point eight percent is what I think Indiana or um, Gary's sanitation district is raising over at Lake Station. And Mayor Bill's rate, plus eighteen hundred and some dollars a month for monetary fee. I don't know what that's gonna do to affect us. So Carl said we had to wait till we get the bill and then we need to wait for Lake Station to send us an ordinance update or something. So, but I think we need to increase it anyways.
Yeah. Um, not to change the subject, but did we get, I know we got a true up, but didn't?
We haven't gotten anything yet.
This year?
Not yet.
Not till December. We didn't get.
I don't wanna last four years like the other one.
Yeah. I don't know what to tell you.
One of the things Robert had suggested, so it's pretty smart, is uh, everybody should be on the lookout for any houses that have their gutters and stuff tapped into their sewer lines. Because that costs us a lot of money for rain.
Do we watch for what with the sewer lines?
Yeah, if you have your sewer line, if you have your outside gutters connected to a sewer.
Oh.
We did smoke tests years ago.
Yeah, because that, that will raise our rates up because of the liquid.
Yeah, it's gonna have, just push, push so much root down. They don't know whether it's gray water or rainwater.
Yeah.
They don't care, but they're gonna charge you for it.
Yeah.
But, but usually if Mickey Anderson, when he pumps, he looks to see what's going into that subduct tank. There's two different lines going in there. He calls Robert right away and says, get out of here. And they disconnect everything. So.
Okay. That's what you have to do for what you're talking about, what we talked earlier about what you said. Um, it's a case by case basis, cause this is an older town. This was like a vacation area, I don't know where they were coming from, the city to come out here. So anything was, anything goes here, you know, you've got, you've got different stuff in the ground that goes in there for fifty, sixty, seventy years, you know? And as, like you said, when Mickey comes out here and goes that he sees an anomaly or something irregular, he contacts me and tells me what he thinks. And then I give, tell him what I think. And then we say, okay, tell the owner what they gotta do. And we, nine times out of ten, we make them disconnect it from what happens. Cause you'll see after a big storm, you will see our flow charts metering. Exactly. And it's awful strange during a big storm that everybody's using the bathroom at that time.
They'll take a dump with.
So, you know, you can't get everything and you can't just run into houses and see what's connected, what's not connected. So it takes time, but as we find them, we make them adhere to our ordinances and laws of what's doing with the MS four.
I know years ago, because there really was no regulations, that the town did allow Homer Rouge to connect their drain into the drain.
Right. And that, but that's when it came out. I think it was seventy eight or something like that, whenever they came up with the separation systems.
Cause I remember that.
Sewage and storm water. When they did that, they made them separate the lines. All the lines are separated.
Okay.
So anyway, I'm gonna get with Sander, Timmy and I are, and find out when, but we've gotta get these rates increased, okay?
What about the water too? Didn't Indiana American, did they increase our rate?
Yes, in May.
Oh, yes, that was increased.
So, but right now we're still making a profit, so I'm gonna hold off. I can't hit them with everything at once, so.
No, I just.
As long as we're making a profit in water, um, we'll, we'll take care of the other stuff, so.
Okay, streets.
Streets. Um, we're, we're starting the chip this Friday to get that going because we have, people love their branches out in the streets. Okay, and we just got through reading, so we have to, I just got all the mowing out of the way for the town. And we're gonna start, we gotta do a couple of dry wells tomorrow, clean them out so they're functioning. And then after that, we're gonna start chipping either later in the day, Thursday, tomorrow, or into Friday. Um, we repaired a sinkhole from a dry well that was on Matt McKinley.
Right, Scott across from Ralph Field's house, old house.
That went before.
I deleted the line that was there. So there's no more line that will go there. Uh, there was a previous line that went up the street behind Sign Source that tapped into another one. Another line, storm line, that went up the alley that came out on Garfield. It's connected to a storm drain that goes into a dry well. Why that was done, I don't know, but that's the dry well we're gonna be addressing tomorrow. And the one on Harrison, that's literally up to the top. And with, uh, that's under storm water and other things. So you're talking about a feature right now, so I'll look into that. And also the next thing is, you and Tammy?
Mm-hmm.
I told Sue that we could use one load of uh.
Yes, one load of salt.
Did you order it?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Sue told me to write it down and I did not.
I'm gonna ask you to place blame. I'm just saying, did you order it? You say no.
I did not write it down.
Tomorrow, that would be good. I'm just trying to stay ahead of the game because according to all the forecast for the future sayers and the weather.
They were gonna have a bad winter.
We're gonna have a very bad winter here. And I'd rather have salt did not happen.
It will be ordered tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Okay, um.
I thought the salt contract was in October.
No, he just wants to order a load of salt.
Okay.
Yeah.
We did have a contract in the, in the previous years. We do every year.
Yeah, it does get renewed annually.
It's as needed how we order it. It's as needed.
Yeah.
So we got room right now, so we're gonna get it while it's still under last year's price. In case we get a freak storm in the middle of October, you know, there's going, I mean, that's how I gotta think. I gotta think ahead. So. You stay ahead of it.
Is that it on streets?
Be proactive, not reactive.
Is that on streets? Is that it, Robert?
Um, everybody like their black company?
I think they did a good job.
They did a nice job.
Oh, Morgan, so sorry. Um, next call's coming out October one. You guys need to check your streets and give something to me. I know Michigan, we've gotta do something there to buy them jobs. I know Michigan, we've gotta do something there to buy them jobs.
Well, I thought, I thought we had that on the list this time. I thought that was on the list this time.
No, we never got Michigan on the list.
Oh, I thought we got that portion.
We did the two on Indiana Street.
I thought we had that one too.
No, that's gonna be done, and then by Shirley Keensler.
I know.
Will be whole there too, so. So anyway, drive up and down your streets and see what you see. Tyler's got a few too.
Yeah, and just remember when you're driving out there, those aren't potholes, those are called layers. And when you're, you can't drop a coal patch a layer because you'll do it, it'll be gone, it might last a day or two, and the money that the town pays for coal patch to put down in layers is just counterproductive. You're just dragging it down the street, making a mess, and it's gonna end up in the storm drains that'll have to jet anyways. So it's just, you know, it's better to have it fixed and done right the first time so that way you don't have to go back and do it again.
So and our bridge also had like eight potholes on it. I was gonna call the lane yesterday, they fixed them, yes. So we have our, um, bridge black, or pothole, whatever.
Okay, sanitation, total disposal. We need to have a meeting for them.
I had a meeting with them today.
Oh, today? And?
And, go ahead, Tammy.
Okay, so the contract...
I did, I did.
The contract for twenty, the price for twenty-twenty-six is not going to increase, it's going to stay the same.
Oh, that's good.
Uh, twenty-twenty-seven and twenty-twenty-eight each year will go up eighty-five cents.
That's not bad.
So...
Twenty, how much?
Eighty-five cents.
That's what it went up the last three years.
And that, yes, that's what it went up the last three years. So, yeah, but I thought it was really good that they are not increasing the price in twenty-twenty-six.
They're very good.
And they do a great job.
Yes, we agree. So, um, everybody's happy with totals, so...
Absolutely.
We have to do an extension, so I think we just make a motion that we're gonna amend their contract.
All right, I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Their contract for three years.
Do I have a second?
I don't have a second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, motion carries. Yeah, they're, they're very good. Okay, um, water.
Water, okay, uh, me and the town manager had a meeting with Indiana American for potential, uh, for a future possibility of them tapping into our water lines to supply the west end of Lake Station with our water. Okay, they mentioned several locations where they'd like to tap in. And this is all just preliminary, this was just, they were just fishing, okay? And they wanted to see if we were receptive to their advances, is the best way to say it. And I said that it would be better, I gave them a couple of locations that would be if the council and the town manager wanted to go that route. I'd rather have them go on newer infrastructure.
Oh, yeah.
So that way it's not putting a strain on ours. And Sue questioned would that extra volume and draw on our lines have anything, you know, damage our lines in any way or this and that? And we didn't get to the point of any...
Who's gonna fix them?
Correct.
Because Indiana American takes a week to fix something.
And then I know Robert always, also said it could lower our water pressure here.
Well, they said not because they...
They're gonna put, that's, uh, okay, they call it pressure running hot, okay? That's what they call it. When the line is just constant and there's water flowing through it at like forty going north.
Well, the thing of it is, if they say, yeah, we will fix it, it's gotta be in writing.
Everything's gonna be...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where...
Well, here's what's gonna happen, we're gonna purchase their water, which we do, and then we're gonna resell it to them at our price.
How about, give them a little...
No.
Hold down discount?
No, no, no. What I'm saying is, for an ambulance service, we will...
Hey, I mentioned that to her already. They could hold it, hold that as leverage against us.
Yeah, but Lake Station does.
They don't deal with ambulances.
But anyway, they said down the road, it could be seventeen years from now, okay? So, but they just want to know, this is what they're moving into, okay?
Correct. They just do, like I said, they were fishing, doing exploratory, wooey, that's the best way to say it. So, uh, also another with water, the water tower.
Yeah, leak?
It, no, it was just a pressure valve, yeah, but I can't lie to you, but it needs to be, the valves in there need to be changed. And also there's gonna be a shock. The gauge that reads the pressure on it is telling it, it's stuck on twenty-seven pounds. There's no way a guy's gonna hear if there's twenty-seven pounds in there. It's between fifty and sixty-three pounds. So by saying, by telling the diaphragm inside the altitude valve to open and close, it's saying that it's filled there, but there's still water demand coming into there and it's pushing the levels up, and that's not telling it to shut off. So right now what I did is, when I went over there, when I was called out there, I manually adjusted the valve so that way it won't do what it was doing. And then I had our technician out there today and he agreed with me that that's what needs to be done, and that's on schedule again within the next two weeks. All this stuff will be addressed. And as far as what we were talking about with, uh, them raising the pressure, what they said about the pressure going through the lines, they won't do that until they go, but that's a reality of happening right now within the next few months. Because they just put a new line in front of McDonald's on six, and that tees off and feeds our line into our telemetry hut right there for our pump station. Does it, right now the pressure regulator isn't working, so if they jack the pressure up to seventy, which is what they wanna do, ours are set at sixty-three, so that way it will not get any more pressure than sixty-three pounds. Even if they, they could put, they said they're gonna put seventy on, they could put a hundred on there and it wouldn't matter because our pressure regulator is set at sixty-three. So our system will stay at a regular sixty-three pounds at all times.
So they can't change it at all?
They can't do, yeah, they can't hurt us by pulling their, whatever they...
But they didn't want to.
Exactly. They didn't want, because I told them, as soon as they said it, I said, whoa!
Well, if they tried to do that and ours was like that, they're gonna mess up their line.
Well, no.
With seventy, it can go nowhere.
No, because there's a twelve-inch line, we have an eight-inch line, the base line we have in our system is eight inches. They have twelve-inch, twenty-four, and everything else like that, so they can handle the volume that's going through there. The volume, that's just like putting a, a piece of, you know, thread through a needle hole. You know, you're, you're only gonna get one little piece through there, you're not, no matter how much you force it, and then, you know, like they say, you'll say, pressure breaks pipes. And if we don't have a regulator on it, it will break our pipe.
Yeah. Okay, is that it for water?
Um, IFA, the letter, IFA sent an email to Matt Kaiser, Matt Kaiser sent it to me, I had to have Sharon sign a cover letter and fax it back, and the cover letter was addressed to Jim Pence on our letterhead. Uh, Matt sent the letter back to IFA, they did respond. They said they have everything they need right now. They said that the environmental review is still in progress, so it is possible they may request additional information.
And that's on the red dramatics?
Yes, that's on the red dramatics.
Do they know roughly when they're gonna start putting it?
IFA is researching it.
They're, yeah, they're still reviewing it.
Hopefully they'd hurry up.
Then we have to put it out for bid, and then we have to get quotes and bids, and then...
Oh, it'll be spring.
Yes.
If we're...
Yeah.
And she's got a copy of that.
Okay, is, is that it? Okay, stormwater?
Stormwater.
And new machine.
Exactly. Stormwater, we just purchased, the town purchased a hydro valve that is for cleaning drywall wells as well, it's a multi-use tool. We could use it for breaks also, for when we get down to the pipes, suck all the debris away from it, clean it, it's safer than digging with a backhoe or a mini because the jetted water pushes everything away. It will not damage fiber, it won't damage any poly, anything else like that, it won't break lines or anything like that. We have eight-hundred-pound capacity tank on there, and I think it's five-hundred gallons of clean water that pumps through there. We're gonna put, I just talked to Sue, we're gonna purchase a couple of hydrant keys, I'm gonna outfit with the hydrant keys, and I got a couple of hoses upstairs, so that way while it's mobile, we can have it all on there, we can replenish our freshwater supply at the nearest hydrant. So it's all ready to go and it's a very, very useful tool in our arsenal.
So everybody go see Robert's new toy, okay?
I already saw it.
And like I said, that was, uh, I was urged, I'll say it nicely, I was urged by President Suedo to keep looking for this thing and get it, and then when, uh, town manager phoned up and it could be used for water, she was very helpful and...
We split it.
Split it some.
Yeah, yeah, because that way it can be used for both.
Exactly, and I just wanna say, you know, thanks to you guys for that tool and you for...
And we'll come down and see your new toy, okay?
Oh, Jimmy already been down there, he likes it. He was there the first morning, he was there at six o'clock in the morning with me. But, yeah, it's, I mean, it's, it's a tool in your tool belt and it can...
Anything to help me, um, thanks.
It's, it's a useful tool, and I'm, you know, I'm, I'm glad that we got it.
Yeah, I am too.
You guys made a brave decision by getting that.
It'll help you guys.
Well, it'll help the town, that's where...
Well, yeah, but it's cleaning the drains and that, it'll help you guys because otherwise you're doing it by hand.
And not only drains, while it's nice out, it's, we can clean the valves off, valve boxes out. So we go in there, we ain't gotta sit there for forty-five minutes with an alligator grabber to grab the dirt and the dust and that out of there, we can just back it out of there now. So it's, I mean, it's potentially, I can say it did, but potentially, you know, made the water progress life a little bit easier.
Well, and you, you guys have no employees, so you need to help.
Well, that's all right, you got me, that's all you need.
Thank goodness we got you.
That'll be on the, later, third person.
Okay, is that it, Robert?
What else do we got, uh? I see, door monitor, me with that, oh, I almost forgot, first of all, I was worried about, also water.
I think you got everything.
The tower, yeah, that's, I mean, that's pretty much everything there is with the MS4, and, uh, we had to make a few other purchases with the MS4, I spoke to you, spoke to Sue about the mask because you have to have a full coverage in your face.
Protection from...
Those jitters, they fly back at you and you get rocks and everything else.
Yeah, you don't wanna be going to OHSIS school, right?
I'm gonna get started. But, yeah, there were several fires because of Indiana American because of that, so you gotta, we're careful on everything else, but we all have sites and everything else, you have to wear your safety gear and all that other fun stuff, and I do adhere to it, you know?
Okay, is that it, Robert?
Yes, yes, ma'am, that's it.
Okay, old business, new business, legal reports?
Just quickly, spoke to Robert today and he suggested this, and it's probably a pretty good idea, uh, the idea of a pump station, uh, that, you know, this new developer may want to add a pump station. We need to make sure that if, if he does, that the pump station is publicly not privately owned. And that way we can control how big it is and whether it's gonna work and all this, and we get to, if it goes down, we come in and take care of it.
What kind of pump station, he wants to put in?
Basically, Matt Cassel, he's thinking, if he's, you know, if he builds home on all these potseeds, he's thinking that since they're all right next to each other, he builds his homes, he would have his, instead of having septic at each one, he want a pump station, because it's cheaper when you put a pump station.
You know how much that costs?
He said a hundred fifty thousand.
No.
Well, I'm just, it's just, we didn't agree with him. We just, we just told him that he needs to make sure because...
And the reason why I said that, my husband went for a grant, for federal grant from Visklosky's office to get that, okay? We got it, we didn't have the match and he had to give it back, so...
He claims a hundred fifty, but the point being is, he...
We're talking millions.
Robert informed him at the plant, that we need to watch out because most cities and towns do not allow for you to have a privately-owned pump station. So that's why I'm always bringing this up.
We got the same thing in Miami.
We have an ordinance, or we should propose an ordinance to not have privately-owned pump stations. Because, Robert made a good point, this guy doesn't, if it goes down, this guy don't fix it for two weeks, there's raw sewage floating around the town, you know, floating in people's lungs.
So is, is he building where there, where we have sub, where we have subject?
Yes, because there's no subject gates past your house.
No.
So everybody else is, I mean, you're on our sewer system.
But everybody after me, you're, you're on subject, right?
Yes.
But both those roads are, got streets, paved streets?
Howard does not.
Okay, now Sue, isn't there an ordinance that if a builder builds in there, they have to put the street in?
If they're financing.
So many houses, yes.
I didn't know it was so many houses.
It's also because they're financing through a bank too.
Okay.
If they're financing through a bank, they have to have the street paved.
He knows, he's...
But he's not...
Yeah, because I thought so before.
We would probably get some notification, I'd imagine, as the town's saying that, you know, you have this person who's in the building, your town, and they're financing through this, but they're saying it's an unpaid road, because then at that point they'd probably say, well, you need to pay this road, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I thought there was an ordinance on that, how long ago they was.
Right, but he's, he's doing everything cash, so he won't happen to settle payment. But, yes, Howard is...
Yeah, but he'll have to put, he'll have to put the street in then.
The sidewalk.
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 That's the street.
I thought we had an ordinance before on streets.
I think if you develop it with so many houses, you have...
Yeah.
Because the one next to me, that's not paved or anything, there's only one house.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, there's only one house there and it's just...
That's where he wants to build.
So, I mean, maybe there was, it's so many houses, I don't know. All I know is I remember years ago, if you put a, build in on a street and it's not paved, they had to pave it, the builder.
If they build three or more houses, if...
I don't know.
There's two stipulations, how many houses, I don't know that number, but then also it's financed or it's being financed through a loan, it has to be paid.
And if he's putting, um...
But why doesn't he just hook into our sewer system?
He's gotta get building first.
Right.
We just, we just, Lloyd brought it up because he wanted to make sure that we don't get caught where this guy owns his pump station property. So, yeah.
No, and if he's putting like duplexes, he's gonna have to have big enough land where there's gonna have to, you know, you've got two houses, you've got a separate, two subject, you're gonna have to have, uh, big enough fields.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, uh, yeah, what you're talking about?
I mean, you're gonna have to have big lots.
Proposing, and I, I...
There's regulations.
There are regulations.
He's trying to say that he was tapping his systems into like one place and then feeding it out there. That's not gonna go with the ordinances nor will it go with what Mickey requires as the sewer inspector and everything else like that.
He has to go to county and get his...
Yes, because you have to, you have to have a soil, um, test and all that, and it has to be approved by county.
He already said he would do septic if he had to.
Right.
So he doesn't have that, he's, he understands that if the pump housing will work, then he's got to do it.
Well, he wants to add on to our line to give them the price and, um...
Well, he's got to put a pump in there, and they're, they're saying, we have the, the great, the one that's coming out is the great one.